Pete, please start, introduce your team. Please keep your presentation under 10 minutes.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Council President, Council Members. My name is Pete Little. I'm Executive Director of the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. With me today are Sandra Downs, Chief Financial Officer, the Parking Authority; David Rhodes, General Counsel for the Parking Authority; Candace New, Chief Operating Officer for the Parking Authority; and Tiffany James, who's our Communications Manager, the Parking Authority. The Parking Authority manages the city's on-street and off-street parking programs and assets, including city-owned parking garages, cities' parking, public parking lots, the city's parking meter program, the city's residential permit parking programs, the city's residential reserve disabled parking program, and the city's Valet Parking Regulations Administration. Our major initiatives for fiscal year 2019 include introduction of pay-by-cellphone services at metered parking, introduction of pay-by-license-plate multi-space meters to replace our old pay-and-display multi-space meters, piloting a new virtual permit parking program in several RPP areas, and continuing to renovate city-owned garages, some examples of which include replacing elevators at the Market Center Garage and doing concrete and structural repairs there, across the street at our Baltimore Street Garage, replacing elevators there and doing concrete and structural repairs there as well, and at our Penn Station Garage to replace an expansion joint there at the garage. That's pretty much our presentation here. That's what we do and what our plans are for this year.
Well, I have the first question. On Service 682 in the Agency Detail Volume Two book, the former metrics shows the city expect a targeted $1.3 million decline in parking meter revenue in fiscal '19 from fiscal '18. What does the city expect to collect less revenue from this source?
We've experienced some reduction in parking meter revenue that's associated with construction projects around the city, specifically in Harbor East where we had been collecting a lot of parking meter revenues. There are a number of blocks that have been taken out of service for that construction of the Central Avenue Bridge and further construction in that area. We expect that, once all of that opens back up, to begin to collect revenue in that area again. We've seen some decline as well, too, with the installation of some bike lanes and some of the express bus lanes throughout the city, and we've seen a slight decline due to the parking citation amnesty as well.
Okay. Here's one thing that I want you to consider as a parking authority. Like in Ballmer County, on some Saturdays, they give free parking from a certain period of time so that people can go shopping and those kind of things. I think we need to look into that. I know it's a decrease in revenue, but it's a triple, it's a ripple effect for businesses. Then they pay more taxes because people can go and shop. Because people got that, you know, I pay the meter, I run into the market, or I run into a store, and I'm waiting, and I get behind, even though you can do it on your phone now, you know. They should not have to worry about doing that and the out-shopping.
I think one of the unintended consequences of that, though, would be, and what we've found when there is free metered parking for certain periods of time, that unfortunately the workers in that area, whether they're office workers or others, park there.
I forgot about that.
Yep, and take up the spaces.
Councilwoman Sneed, then Councilman Dorsey. Sneed gave hers first.
Thank you. So...
No, I gave it to Sneed.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
All right, go ahead.
Sneed's up.
She gave it to me first.
Thank you. So, the parking meters, they fall under your purview, right?
Yes.
So, I have a parking meter that's down. It's been down for over a year. I emailed it into you all's office and asked that it could be picked up. A year later, still on the 311 app, it's still reported as new, and nothing has literally been picked up over an email that I sent last year.
Wow.
Yeah. It's still sitting there, still looks like this, and nothing has changed. The sad thing about this is this is across the street from Northeast Market in East Baltimore, right on McAlgerie Street, and I'm like, here's a place that we say tourists should go to. This is a place where folks come from out the hospital, and then they make it down to Northeast Market, and it just doesn't look good, and this is something that I sent an email about a year ago, and it's still down.
Can we...
So, we can fix that. That would be great. My second question is...
Hang on one second, Councilwoman. So, we're going to do our very best to stay away from district-specific issues. Can someone talk to Councilwoman Sneed immediately after this is over, get all that information, and let's get that resolved for her, like, this week?
Yep, certainly.
Thank you very much.
And residential parking permits, is my next question. Do you provide enforcement?
Do we provide enforcement?
Provide enforcement. Do you link up with DOT to make sure that in different areas, especially with RPP programs, because we get a lot of phone calls, I'm sure, for different offices, are we providing enforcement?
Well, enforcement is not part of the Parking Authority. It is part of the Department of Transportation, but we do have, you know, a relationship with them. In RPP areas especially, it can be very difficult and inefficient to enforce because each vehicle needs to be checked for a permit, so that's why one of our initiatives this year is to pilot a virtual permit parking program that'll allow enforcement in residential permit parking areas to be much more efficient, to be able to happen much more frequently, and as a result, you know, see the results that the residents are looking for, and that's, you know, freeing up of parking spaces.
Thank you.
Sure.
You go to Councilwoman. Thank you. Schleifer.
Yes, thank you. I know, I know. I was telling you, he did. You go first. My first question's about this 50-year lot lease, what your take on that is.
Well, it was actually a suggestion that I had a number of years ago, that the city consider leveraging some of the parking assets that it owns in order to be able to do other things. So, we do, the Parking Authority does support that potential lease of these facilities, which would thereby leverage them for some upfront payments that the city can utilize in other ways, some capital for development in other areas of the city. So, we're supportive.
And so, Councilman Schleifer, Pete, it pains me to do this to you, but you just exposed a bit of an oversight in my thought process and the schedule. Would you please come back to the chambers tomorrow at 1:30 PM during the Neighborhood Impact and Investment Fund session? We have Colin Tarbert from the Mayor's Office, Steve Kraus from Finance, and Michael Braverman from Housing to discuss that, just in case any questions, because obviously the revenue for that is... Thank you, Councilman Schleifer, for bringing that up. So, could you please come back tomorrow at 1:30?
Yep.
For that half-hour session, or have whoever at Parking Authority can speak to that. Thank you, Councilman Schleifer.
I'll be here.
So, that whole topic's being discussed tomorrow?
We... Why don't you go a little bit down the rabbit hole?
I'll just keep going, okay. How much revenue are you going to lose from those lots when they go offline and there's no...
That we're going to deal with tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
So, I've asked...
Okay, so, one more question on that, then, and maybe this is also for tomorrow, but you might be able to answer this one off the top of your head. How many employees work at all those lots as far as attendance and other things like that internally?
Probably around 40 employees total, but of course, those facilities will still need employees. Typical, and, you know, even if a new management company were to come on, and it may be one of the management companies that's there at the facilities already, but oftentimes they interview the folks who are working there because they know the facility's best.
Sure. And so, are those positions, what agencies are those 40 positions being proposed to be removed from?
No agencies. They're with private parking companies that we contract with to manage the facilities. So, they are not city employees or Parking Authority employees.
The guys like in the garage across the street who we see every day, they're not, they're not city employees?
No, they're not.
They don't have city IDs?
Uh, no. They should not have city IDs.
Okay.
Yep. They're not city employees.
I'll ask you the revenue question tomorrow at 1:30.
Okay.
Can you put me down for the first question at 1:30?
So...
The Council President gets first question.
Okay, so, Dor... Okay, hang on. Or, yes, sir, Mr. President's next, then Dorsey, Karen...
No, I had already asked my question. I wanted to clarify something that Pete said.
Yes, sir. Give me one second, Mr. President. Karen, for the NIIF portion tomorrow, I specifically spoke with Colin Tarbert and Pete about a table that shows the revenue and all that stuff. Can we just make sure that all this stuff that Councilman Schleifer's hitting on with the revenue and over the years, all that parking stuff, just please make sure that's in the table that's presented tomorrow, Mr. President?
Okay. Mr. Little, when the councilman asked you about the 50 million and the garages, you stated that that was your idea two years ago?
I was actually...
But your idea was to sell them, not to lease them?
Originally, yes, to sell.
Okay, because the idea to lease them was my idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because y'all wanted to sell them, and I refused to sell them.
I suspect the President will remind everyone of that again tomorrow at 1:30. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Little, how you doing?
I'm fine. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks for being here. I don't know what you call them, those stickers that get put on cars' windshields. What do you call them?
In residential permit parking areas?
No, 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 for city employees.
They're official business permits.
Official business permits. And they can go on city-owned vehicles, and they can go on non, privately-owned vehicles.
Right, if they're used for business, city business purposes.
If they are sometimes going to be used for city business, right?
Right.
Because I could use my car for personal purposes and also... How many of those do we have out there on personal vehicles and also on city-owned vehicles?
The total is about 800 of them. I do not, you know, off the top of my head, know the breakdown between personal and city vehicles, but about 800, which is down significantly from before we managed the process of official business permits, there were thousands of them.
And so, I'm glad that it's being reined in. When parking enforcement is monitoring metered spaces, are they documenting when they find one of these at a metered space?
That might be a question more for Department of Transportation since we don't oversee parking enforcement, but what I believe that they do is to note that that official business permitted vehicles parking there. They aren't supposed to park for longer than the duration of the meter, so if it's a four-hour duration meter, they're not supposed to park for longer than four hours of...
And so, do you get reports from DOT as to the frequency that they're finding that? And do you calculate that into... Because you made this shift, or you're making this shift to demand-based parking costs, and I'm just, this has to impact your assessment of demand and setting of rates, I have to, I have to believe.
Well, I think, to get to the first part of your question, if they note that an official business permit is being abused, they do report it to us, and we send a letter to that.
Because I mean, I know people in city agencies who say that people that they, that they work with and share offices with are basically spending, you know, hours every week running in and out of city buildings, moving their personal vehicles from one metered parking space to another, because the city isn't providing them parking, which I'm fine with, but they're, this is obviously negating some of the potential revenue from metered parking spaces that we should be gaining revenue from and that I would say goes into your assessment.
It can. You know, we have limited the number of permits along the way, but, you know, you have that balance between, do we then force those folks to pay at the meters when they're doing city business or not? And so, we try to gauge if there's abuse and then to correct those particular abuses along the way. Does it impact the availability of parking? To a degree, it does, yes.
I'd like to see some better tracking of this for these kind of reasons.
And also, if we, if we do move to, or as we move, I should say, to pay-by-cellphone and pay-by-license-plate meters, we will be enforcing, enforcement will be using license-plate recognition cameras for purposes of enforcement of that, and can better track the use and abuse of official business permits. So, this is part of an overall plan to help with that particular issue as well, too, and to weed out those folks for abusing the permits.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is about Zipcar.
Councilpeople, too, yeah.
My, um, the Parking Authority has this policy about locating Zipcar in areas needing the support of a community association in order to allow for a Zipcar to be placed there. I don't know how that policy was developed or when. I'd like to know what needs to be done in order to change that policy, because in my case, like, I know, I know where Zipcar could be really useful in my district, and the prime location is one where the Neighborhood Association won't approve it, even though nobody that participates in the Neighborhood Association would be impacted because nobody lives within two or three blocks of the location.
Yeah.
So, you want to know, can you clarify what you're looking for?
How that, how that policy can be changed to, to create better versatility of options or to lesser constrain who has say over what can happen in their neighborhood.
Now, when Zipcar first came to the city under a contract with us, it's now, I believe, eight years ago, there was a lot of angst amongst a lot of neighborhoods about bringing these cars in and reserving the spaces, because there hadn't been any experience with car-sharing and how it could then reduce the number of personally-owned vehicles in each neighborhood. And so, when we developed, first developed the policy for placement of those reserved spaces, we really wanted it to be as collaborative a process as possible, and so made sure that we reached out to the council member whose district it would be placed, reached out to the community association, or in some cases, associations, if there are multiple ones there. If they were placed in a business district, to reach out to the merchants' association, too. And perhaps we were too collaborative, and maybe we need to take another look at that.
Thank you. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, it doesn't.
Good morning.
Yep, good morning.
Was parking free yesterday on Memorial Day?
Parking meters were not...
Parking meters were not...
Not in effect, right.
Were par...
Were in effect, sorry.
They were in effect.
Yeah, it's only, uh...
Were parking control agents working?
You'd have to ask Department of Transportation that question.
Because it was a city holiday, and all city workers that I was aware of...
That's a question for DOT Councilman.
Okay. Well, here's where it's a question for the Parking Authority. If it turns out that parking control agents were not working yesterday, why would we have parking meters in effect?
Well, in those areas where the parking meters are needed to be in effect in order to create availability of parking, then they should be in effect. And frankly, they should be enforced as well, too.
Okay, so that's, so I just, this is, this is where I'm kind of getting at, is if it turns out there were no parking control agents available yesterday, the part of this that you believe should be fixed is we should make sure that parking control agents are working on holidays?
Yeah, whenever the parking meters are in effect.
Yeah, okay.
They should be enforcing them.
And, and see, this is where I'm afraid it's going to actually end up going back the other direction, which is, I suspect it's going to end up being that parking control agents aren't going to be available to enforce, so what can you do to make sure that you are programming these meters to not try to collect money on holidays when no one's going to be enforcing them?
I would say that's the wrong solution to the problem. We need to figure out how they can be enforced.
Okay, all right, all right. Good pushback. We'll, we'll save the second round of this until after DOT has their thing. Second, over here on Gay Street between Fayette and Lexington, and this is not so much a district-specific question as much as it's a...
I know, because that's in the 11th district.
It's an illustration of a question. When the MTA created these bus-only lanes, it involved moving some parking, and in this case, that's an example of one where the parking moved from the east side of the street along the War Memorial Building to the west side along the plaza. When it had been on the east side next to the War Memorial Building, there were rush-hour restrictions on that parking. Now that it's on this side, there are no rush-hour restrictions, and so now there is an entire, that parking is good 24/7, or, you know, as far as I can tell. Was this something that Parking Authority had any participation in, or was this a decision made entirely by DOT to remove the rush-hour restrictions?
Well, if it involved parking meters being moved, we would have been involved in that decision-making.
Okay. So, why would you think it would be a good idea to take off the rush-hour restrictions in what I have to say is one of the more congested areas of downtown traffic during rush hour?
You'd have to ask Department of Transportation. We are not traffic engineers, and we're just parking folks. And so, when it comes to designating peak-hour restricted lanes or taking that peak-hour restriction away, that is solely DOT's decision. When, in fact, they decide to take off peak-hour restrictions or no parking restrictions, then we almost always come in to determine whether those blocks should be metered or not, but it's not our decision.
Okay, so you, so you were involved in the decision, but you're not taking any blame for it?
Well, I would say, I'd take the blame for relocating the meters...
The meters from one side to the other. I got you.
But not in determining whether the lane should be peak-hour restricted or not. That is not our, we do not have expertise in that area.
And then the last question, and I know that we're going to talk more about this at the hearing on Thursday with the, the new housing fund that, where the money is coming from lease. I was looking at, on your presentation, where it says the budget eliminates approximately $4 million of parking management expenses associated with garages that the city plans to lease in fiscal '19. So, is that 4 million, that's what we're paying the people who are running the different city garages right now?
Yes, and for management and maintenance and upkeep of all of the garages, so the total expenses associated with those garages is about 4 million annually.
How many garages is that?
Well, it's going to be three garages.
Great, okay. I know we'll get into detail tomorrow. I would be curious, if you could, as the person who focuses on this, could you give us some idea of how a private entity would make so much more money?
Councilman, I'm going to, that's going to get addressed tomorrow. That's already, that's already been requested.
Okay, really? Because it's really not about the fund, it's about the concept of why leasing works.
Right, so when I spoke with Pete Hammond about this, what I talked about was a variety of different data points, including how much revenue a private operator was going to bring in, what the impact on, on existing debt service was going to be, how much revenue the city was losing out on, how much parking tax revenue would come in. All those things are in the data request.
Well, the only thing I would ask, then, is it's only 11 o'clock, and we've got half an hour more associated for parking management. If we get to the end of parking management questions...
Then we will get back to that.
I'd be happy to take that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Northeast Baltimore Councilman Brandon M. Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Little, thank you, and thank you for all that you do. Can you talk a little bit more about the, finally, this is something you and I have spoken about for at least the last three or four years, us moving to the pay-by-license-plate or the pay-by-app, and how you guys are going to roll it out throughout the city, like, what's your rollout plan, where are you going first, or is it going to go everywhere all at once?
Yeah, no, it would be phased in, like many of the other programs that we have here in the city, and that would be the case for both pay-by-cellphone and pay-by-license-plate multi-space meters. It's very likely that we'll follow the same pattern that we have with other programs in that we would start with the central business district, and then work our way to Harbor East, Fells Point, Federal Hill, Mount Vernon, and then all of the other areas of the city. Pay-by-cellphone, I think, can happen rather quickly because there's not, you know, a big investment in capital in that regard, so that will probably go first to all of those areas, and then the pay-by-license-plate multi-space meter, since it involves new equipment, would probably be done over the course of a couple of years.
Yeah, that was my question, because I think that the only worry that I have about that is that we still have some places, as you know, we just, you just handled one for me last year in my district, where we still have the old meters, right? And if, are we going to make, are we going to just stop rolling those out to places and go to the, go to these other ones, or have we already, like, purchased these in a contract that we're going to have to go to?
Yep, we, we don't have any of the old meters that only accept coins on-street anywhere in the city anymore. So, at, at the end of last year, thanks to Candace New over here, our COO, who pressed for that to happen, we only have credit cards, both multi-space and single-space, that accept credit cards and debit cards and communicate electronically with us. And, yeah, in terms of the pay-by-cellphone, we would like to get that out as quickly to all areas of the city, but again, the other requires the, the equipment, and that could take a little bit longer. But, yeah, we did make it a priority to make sure that we removed all of those old meters from every area of the city.
And we get to some of them, there's just some places, that's like the one that I sent to you guys, that most people wouldn't even look for, for a parking meter to be there. My last question, just thinking about how you said that you guys are going to roll this out. When you guys are looking at these programs and everything that you do within, within the, within parking, do you guys have anyone that looks through a lens of equity? Do you look at how these things are going to impact poor people or black people throughout the city in a different way? Do you guys analyze that at all?
Well, it's, your legislation, frankly, has caused us to think again about, about that. I like to think that just sort of innately, we do. One of our, you know, values that we have, our seven values, is fairness at the Parking Authority and making sure that our programs are fair for anyone, and that we've practiced that, but, you know, your legislation's causing us to think a little bit more, and frankly, we'll need training in, in terms of how to view our programs and our, our projects with that equity lens.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman. Pete, one of the, one of the projects I worked on when I was on your guys' advisory board, like, five or six years ago, was the tiered pricing, or exploring feasibility of tiered pricing for RPP. Can you remind me, would that have to be a legislative change or is that an administrative issue?
That could be administrative. It does not be, need to be legislative because the actual permit prices are not in the RPP code.
Okay, so it would be administrative?
It, yes, it can be administrative, yep.
Is that something we could ask the advisory board to pick back up as, as a research issue, just to look at that again? Seems like it'd be a good idea maybe to revisit it, because it's been like four or five years, four years, maybe?
Yeah.
I'm just curious what, what their thoughts are on it, as well as your opinion.
Well, there's still discussion about it, actually. Active discussion in the RPP advisory board about it, and especially as we take a look at piloting virtual permit parking. One of the other great things about virtual permit parking and being able to enforce on a, on a more regular basis is that as we're enforcing using license-plate recognition cameras, we can also collect data on utilization of the permits, and in those areas, and there are some areas of the city where, if we have good, regular enforcement, there's, there's going to be then plenty of parking spaces for residents. In other areas, and you know some of those other areas well, even with stricter and more regular enforcement using LPR, just the sheer number of permits then help, creates, you know, problems in and of itself. So, in those particular areas, you know, it's taking a look at them to see how tiered pricing might affect demand for the permits and thereby get residents to reconsider having three or four vehicles instead of just one or two, and using it in those particular areas in order to get that effect, and not necessarily in those other RPP areas that may not need the, the tiered pricing in, in order to eliminate some of the permits.
So, administratively, Parking Authority, I think what you're saying is administratively, Parking Authority would be willing to consider tiered pricing in RPP areas based on current utilization as opposed to just blanket across the board?
Yes.
And that would obviously be something you'd work closely with a council member on for each of those respective areas?
Absolutely, with a council member, obviously with a community associations associated with those areas, everyone involved, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark.
A question to you, Mr. Chairman. What's a tiered, I don't know what this is.
Tiered, tiered pricing is, right now... Tiered, tiered pricing is, right now, across the board, it's $20 per decal.
Twenty.
For example, in Area 9, where I live in Federal Hill, we have RPP. We probably have about 800 on-street parking spaces, but we have about 2,200 decals and visitor passes. Does that sound right, Candace, plus or minus? So that means that any given time-
Yeah.
-up to 2,200 vehicles could be competing for 800 parking spaces.
And?
There are a number of households, probably 11 or 12% in that area, that have three or more RPP decals. So the idea is-
More for-
Mary Pat Clark would get her, her first decal for $20, and then Joe Clark would get his decal for $20. But then kid number one, or roommate number one, would pay $250 for the third decal. And that's utilized as, as kind of the, the stick to incentivize people to have less vehicles in those high-volume-
That would do it, after they killed you.
Yeah, I, I see. Councilman Dorsey, we've finally found a point we agree on.
Can I just, please? Just so, just so others understand that this is not unusual, where other places around, like Boston-
So there are, yeah, so when I was-
Have extreme, much, much higher costs for residential parking permits in areas.
Yeah, so Councilman Dorsey, I'll share with you the, the analysis I did when I was with the advisory board. There are some cities that do it. We looked at the top 100 cities in terms of population. There's maybe eight or 10 cities that util, that at the time utilized a tiered pricing model for a variety of reasons. Some of it had to do with parking management and reducing the number of vehicles on the street, but I'll send that to you.
Even, I mean, even without tiered pricing, I mean, $20 is extremely low for an annual cost for a permit. Other places like Boston are charging like $150 a month.
I'll, I'll send you the data and-
And they have $15 an hour.
There are cities that also have the, the permits for free, or for $5, $10, so it does vary pretty widely. We've been joined by Councilmember Chris Burnett from the 8th District. Councilwoman Clark, floor is yours.
Thank you, and, and I just, I have one question for you. Well, it's three parts, but it's all about, it's all about the revenue from the parking tax. So-
And we don't collect the parking tax, so I may or may not be able to answer the questions about the parking tax.
I thought that you, though, had first dibbies on it, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, it goes into the Parking Enterprise Fund, but that's managed by the Finance Department.
So you don't have, so you don't have a parking tax as part of your revenue stream?
Not as part of our direct revenue stream that we collect on behalf of the city. The parking tax is collected by the Finance Department.
No, I, I understand the, the mechanics of it all. I'm just trying to find how much, how much parking tax comes in, what it gets set aside for, that is obligations, how much is left over, and what we're spending it on. That's what I want to know. I wrote it down on a piece of paper. I'll be glad to give it to you, and I will ask the chairman if, if that's okay, and then you can answer me if anybody in your Parking Authority knows what happens with the parking tax.
Well, I do know what happens with the parking tax at the end of the day. It does go into the Parking Enterprise Fund, which was set up and dedicated to repayment of parking revenue bond debt of the city first and foremost. After the, the bond debt and the payment of parking expenses, then the surplus goes to the city's general fund.
And so, gee, so how much came in that you had the right to reserve? How much was left over? It, and did that balance, and where did that balance go? And is that all the, is all the balance budgeted? So I wrote it all out on a piece of paper, and, so I'll be glad to give it to you if you-
Councilwoman, can we go to Bob? Because I'm pretty sure that information that you're asking is specifically in the budget book.
And I just couldn't sort of, I, I don't trust budget books, not, it's not about dishonesty, it's about the way they're set up.
So, I think, I think Pete summarized it well. All of the parking revenue first goes off to pay expenses and debt services in the garage.
How much parking revenue are you budgeting in the fiscal 2019 budget?
Bob, can you just, can you go to Parking Management and Parking Enterprise Fund in the budget book and just read the numbers?
Yeah, so let me just, let me just finish. All the revenues are in the Parking Management and Parking Enterprise Fund. They first go off to pay the expenses in the, for the garages for, and the management of the program, and then the net, there, the net proceeds come to the general fund. So then-
And what were the, how much?
39 million is net proceeds into the general fund.
And where are they directed?
It's general fund revenue.
It becomes general fund and, and you don't keep track after that?
Yeah, it's, it's general fund revenue, so it's no different than income tax or property tax.
I don't think it's safe to say they don't keep track after that.
Right, right.
No, I mean, per se. So when you're looking at parking proceeds in a given fiscal year, parking tax proceeds, you must be kind of thinking that it's running fast, it's running low, it's not running at all, it's stagnating, because you're thinking of what you need to use it for, and how much the Parking Authority's gonna have to take off the top by, you know, by right.
Right.
And so it's all tied together to other things, and that's what I'd like to know, what the other things, that they turned into general funds at which they, and which part, so 39 million goes to the general fund?
That's, that's what's, that's what's-
And it's all budget, so everything that's left from the Parking Authority is used, it's budgeted, it's in this budget.
Right.
Okay. I wanted to know, thanks, thank you.
Councilwoman, you good?
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. And again, thank you for what you continue to do for the city. As you know, I'm a former board member.
Thank you.
It's a five, it's a five, it's still a five-member board that meets every month. And just my, I joined this board on behalf of the President when I first got on the council, and what an extraordinary learning experience through that process. And I want to thank your team for, just, it's, I can honestly say it's a department that does regular audits, they're very transparent, they're very organized, it's an experienced team that is promoted, and their experience continues to grow. They have always been, you know, at the call of, of any complaints, of, you know, just, I, they, they have been on the forefront of complete streets, from zip cars through getting bike racks, just, it's, you have started basically the process, and I can, I'm not on the board anymore, but I can actually see the flow of how things are working as far as our parking garages and so on. So a couple, one of my questions, the, I know that you have the electric car things in our city garages, and of course, they are still free.
Oh, you have to pay for the parking, yep.
But they have to pay for the parking, but the cars can plug in for free, and there's still a number, in the competitive places, I guess, I don't know if they have electric car outlets that you probably got to pay for.
I think most of them are free in the private parking garages, too. I'm sure there are a few that show.
So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can keep that going free. As far as your bike racks, we know that Penn Station is being renovated and growing. Within the past year, has the bike racks increased? Because we know that's near MICA, and there's apartments coming up. Have the numbers increased overall there and around the city?
Yeah, well, at Penn Station in particular, we added two more bike racks, some of the larger ones where you can, you know, hang your bikes upside down, due to demand, and also Amtrak wanted to move bike racks away from the facade of the building itself. So we added capacity for about another 75 bikes. That was about a year and a half, two years ago, that we added those. And they're not at full capacity all the time with that extra capacity that we added, so we think we have about the right number there now at, at Penn Station. At other garages, I think we've added as, as many bike spaces as we can safely. Unfortunately, most of these garages were developed decades ago, and they really weren't designed for the safe travel into and out of garages on bikes. Many of them have ramps that are narrow, that if bikes were to travel with, with vehicles, it wouldn't be safe, but wherever we've been able to, to install them safely, we have.
I don't know if you're already doing this, but have you ever considered a partnership with the school system, maybe starting with the high schools? And I know that some of the high schools and DOT are, are trying to do like safety initiatives and classes. I'm thinking of Poly as I'm explaining this. I think that the Parking Authority would, could play a good role in working with, trying to, I guess, advertise and help our high school students bike to school, because a lot of them are, you know, live nearby. If that, that could be a, a great partnership to kind of develop with, you know, DOT and some of the, I know they have one initiative going directly at Poly, I don't know if it's at any of the other high schools. I know that Forest Park is getting ready to open. This is like a, at those beginning high schools, it's good to do nice initiatives like that to start off, and they might, you know, kick in. Forest Park is a type of community school, and, you know, try, trying to introduce those things early will help, you know, that's part of all that Complete Streets initiative.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get together with DOT to see if we can partner there. Because, you know, frankly, the, the addition of bike lanes with increased bicycling, it has helped to reduce vehicle ownership, which then at the end of the day, especially in our congested neighborhoods, helps to reduce parking demand, making it easier for those residents who still do need to own a car to find a, a place to park. So it's all part of the solution.
And lastly, any update on valet parking? I knew that's a continual thing to keep regulated.
It's been going, it's been going very well. We still do have quite a few valet operations throughout the city, and the occasional citation that's issued to valet, but things have gotten much, much better. Far fewer complaints about valet operations, so that really worked. And I, I've got to thank those council members who were here at the time that helped to pass that legislation, that it really does work.
Thank you for continuing to bring in your revenue for the city. I know it's a lot, and our city needs to keep that moving.
Will do.
That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Henry, back to your topic for the next eight minutes.
Thank you. I, I, I mean, I hope we don't need all eight minutes for it. I'm just trying to get a sense of why, why would some third party be able to make more money leasing it from us when now we're getting paid by them, and they, and they're going to have to do all the same maintenance and pay for employees that we have to do? How are they making money that we can't?
Well, I think you're going on the assumption that they're going to make more money than we're making. They're not. These, these garages combined are profitable. There is, you know, about a $2 million net operating income, and we'll get the numbers, I guess, tomorrow more specifically, that comes from that. So essentially, what they're doing is monetizing that net operating income revenue stream in order to then sell bonds that'll be paid back over that period of time, utilizing that net operating income in order to give the city an upfront rent payment that it can then use for other capital purposes, for neighborhood investment. So it's not more money that they're making, they are anticipating that same net operating income with, with probably some slight increases in it due to rate increases, which we've taken at the garages as well, too, through operating efficiencies, which we've taken at the garages as well, too. So there's a, there's a history of that net operating income. So essentially, the, the city's just monetizing through this lease deal that income to get an upfront payment to make some major investments in neighborhoods.
Okay, so when you're saying monetizing, the amount of money that we're going to get upfront is going to be?
It'll be equal to the net present value of that income over time.
Okay, and that net present value will include some kind of discount for the, the cost of living increases in the time that the, how long is the lease for?
It'll be the earlier of the, the bonds being repaid that'll finance the lease, which projections show at about 35 years, or 50 years, so whichever comes first.
Okay, all right.
I answered that correctly, didn't I, Bob? Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Colleagues, any other questions for the Parking Authority of Baltimore City? Council President.
Do, um, we have these bike racks. Do we charge for bike racks, you know, for people who park at bike racks?
The only place where we charge to be able to use bike parking is over at the Lexington Street Garage, where we actually built a secure bike cage, and that's only $5 per month.
We should consider that, because as we move forward, we're complete streets, we need a stream of revenue.
Yep.
So keep that on your radar.
Sure will.
Is there a, um, do we have an inventory of all the city parking spaces for bikes?
I don't think so.
Is that something that, that would be a Matt Warfield task?
Probably. We could certainly give him ours, we know exactly how many we have in our facilities, but I wouldn't know.
Oh, in each, each of the 17 or 18 garages, we have X number of parking spaces, or of bicycle spaces?
Right.
I was thinking more of, in, and again, I guess, this is a Matt Warfield question, like, in the public right-of-way, when you have us, not when people chain their bike to like a parking sign, but I mean, like, an actual thing, and some of them look like a bicycle, some of them are-
Yep, we were involved. We, we bought a number of those, yeah. As we were taking out single-space meters and installing multi-space meters in some areas, we did put those toppers on for, for bike parking purposes.
Okay, so I, I have one request. This would be, we haven't had any requests from Parking, okay, so this is number six. Can you get us the number of, of bicycle parking spaces at each Parking Authority facility?
Yep.
Just, just the number for each one, and then we'll, I'll send that to Matt, and, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Parking Authority of Baltimore City? Going once, going twice. Thank you, Pete. You guys are, are just a phenomenal agency. I wish more agencies and city government operated like you guys. You are a model agency, as far as I'm concerned.
Appreciate it.
Just pouring it on. Thank you, guys. Colleagues, we have six minutes until Department of General Services is up.